Recording in progress.
Good morning. We'll get our board commissioners meeting for January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Called order. We'll start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner and Chair.
Zan Ojuro, Commissioner and Vice Chair. Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Cho Curry, County Administrator. And in the room.
Good morning.
Good morning. And Webster, I think you've been here before.
Yes.
A month ago or. Okay, well, welcome. And those doing this remotely.
Jeff Van Arstal, Benton County Sheriff.
Samir Pirati, BCTT facilitator.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning. April Holland, Public Health Administrator.
Shannon Bush, Program Coordinator in Community Development.
All right, welcome. Next up, are there any announcements? Hearing none. We will review and approve the agenda. There are a couple items that have been added. Six point four and six point five. They're on revised agenda. And I think just for flow, we will put item six point three at the end of new business. And that's the discussion regarding transition planning for carrying out county administrator duties. So any other changes to the agenda? ensuring there are no other changes to the agenda. Great. So I will consider the agenda approved as revised. Comments from the public. We have Mark Jaeger signed up. Come to the microphone and you have up to three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Jaeger, Benton County resident. Here today to talk to you about the importance of doing a long-term solid waste management plan. So this spring, Republic Services plans to submit new applications to try again to expand the landfill. Right now, there's a limit of one point one million tons per year allowed into the landfill. And according to DEQ reports, that represents nearly thirty-three percent of all solid waste disposed in Oregon in two thousand twenty. Coming here to our county. If an expansion is approved, the tonnage cap goes away and Republic will be free to haul even more waste, household, commercial, and industrial into our county. And less than ten percent of the waste that goes into the landfill comes from Benton County. That amount is, the amount that's going into the landfill has nearly doubled since two thousand sixteen. In the two years that I've been working on this issue and then many years that I've served on your Solid Waste Advisory Council. I've heard many people say trash has to go somewhere. We don't let them expand the dump. What are the alternatives? Well, the answer is, we don't know because Benton County has no long-term solid waste management plan. Other counties have planning documents that look at current and future waste management strategies and impacts. It's not right to ask the county to consider further expanding the landfill before completing a thorough plan, including alternatives for decreasing and redistributing the waste stream. We cannot understand the true burden of an expanded landfill until the impact and alternatives have been thoroughly explored. Republic Services is in a big hurry to get the expansion approved because of contractual obligations to dozens of parties outside Benton County. This is Republic's problem, not Benton County's. Our policymakers, you, and citizens should not be rushed to make an irreversible decision to solve Republic's over-commitment issues. And while the BCTT, the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group, it is working on developing an outline for a sustainable materials management plan. An outline is not a plan. Let's take the time this important issue demands. Republic's own estimates are that the landfill, the existing landfill, has capacity for at least eighteen more years. That gives us plenty of time for a thorough study of what's best for our county over the long run. It's Benton County's economic and environmental future that's most important here. Happy to answer any questions you might have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Mary Bangler.
Hi, my name is Manju Bangler. I'm the reigning Miss Oregon USA, and I'll be competing at Miss USA later this year. I'm also a physicist, actor, organizer, and the founder of an Oregon-based nonprofit Operation Period where we are fighting to create a world where menstruation holds no one back. As part of our organization's mission, we advocate on issues that impact menstruators the most. From ensuring we have the menstrual products we need to attend school and work, to fighting for incarcerated menstruators' rights in prison. This year, we are in addition advocating for local cities and counties to address and cancel medical debt, which is now the number one reason Americans file for bankruptcy. If the county addresses medical debt, which most often impacts low-income and marginalized residents, thousands will have the opportunity to invest in more basic necessities like menstrual products so that they can live life on their terms. Thus, I'm testifying on how the Benton County Board of Commissioners can and should address medical debt for thousands of its residents. We live in a county where healthcare costs are astronomically high. While there is a great need to address our healthcare system structurally, there's also something we can do now to address the debts millions of Americans are faced with because they have sought help from a hospital or clinic. Last year, the city of Toledo and Lucas County, which Toledo is a part of, worked with an organization, RIP Medical Debt, to begin the process of canceling one hundred and eighty million dollars of medical debt. How? Once medical debt has been in collections for enough time, it is purchasable at a one to one hundred ratio. So using American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA dollars, both the city and county contributed eight hundred thousand dollars each for a total of one point six million dollars to acquire one hundred and eighty million dollars of its county's residents' debt. The only requirements in place were that the resident had an income of up to four hundred percent of current federal poverty guidelines or the medical debt exceeds five percent of their estimated household income. There was no application or approval process. The last step was just mailing out letters to the qualified residents informing them that they no longer owed even a penny on their healthcare debt. Medical debt is becoming an entire business with companies now offering medical credit cards for their care. Moreover, debt and financial difficulties have been found to directly contribute to a person's risk to die by suicide, whether or not they have a mental illness. As a Gen Z girl, this is not a world I want to inherit. I want a world where healthcare is a fundamental right and where people can live their lives with dignity, safety, and care. There is no other direct social service program that performs at a one to one hundred ratio. Most often, it is one to one. If you give a resident a dollar, they have a dollar. This program is one of its kind, but its model is not. Right now, more than thirty other jurisdictions are requesting to work with RIP Medical Debt to relieve their residents immediately. In Cook County, Illinois, with just twelve million dollars of their federal funds, RIP Medical Debt has the potential to negotiate the purchase of up to one billion dollars in medical debt for their residents and cancel it. There's literally a template and model for this entire process. I request that this model now be implemented here in our county using ARPA or other unallocated funds. I have a set of estimates that I can submit as well from RIP Medical Debt about our county specifically. The synopsis is that it would cost about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for our county and city to relieve its residents, which is about if the county contributed the same amount as the Lucas County, it would be about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Could you?
Yes.
Wrap it up.
Yes. These are estimates, but provide a foundational understanding of how little funding this will take. I believe strongly that advocacy like this is not only important, but it is imperative. This opportunity to abolish medical debt gives us the opportunity to continue to be a force for good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will start our work session with a COVID update from our Department Operations Center in April Holland. Good morning, April.
Good morning, Commissioner Malone. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Joe Vance, everyone. And happy first day of legislative session to all who celebrate. A quick update for you this week. Hospitals and healthcare are not out of the woods, but things are looking better right now. RSV, or Respiratory Syncytial Virus, peaked back in late November. Flu activity is still high. The adult peak was sometime in December. And for kiddos, they've been plateaued at a high level in terms of flu activity, but this is looking like it's on the decline now. You know, sometimes we do have a second wave of flu in a season, so we will keep an eye on data as we move through the rest of the season. In terms of COVID, it's been the latest of the viruses to surge this winter, but it has been coming down lately. I will say that it's likely to come back up in a bit here. So I'm anticipating, we're anticipating maybe a little bit of a decrease as we're seeing right now, and then an uptick with the newer subvariant of Omicron I brought to you a few weeks ago called XBB one point five. We're seeing a little bit of that variant here now. So while cases are low, we do anticipate it to increase and become the dominant variant, probably sometime in February. At this point, it doesn't seem to be causing more severe disease, but it is more contagious. In terms of reported case counts, they are currently much lower than they have been in some time here in Benton County. For the week of, the first week of the year, we had a total of forty-nine reported cases corresponding to a seven-day rate of fifty-two cases per hundred thousand residents. The case positivity rate was eight percent, and our latest wastewater monitoring signals, which do lag by a couple weeks, doesn't suggest a coming increase. That could change in the next couple of weeks here, though. And while hospital and healthcare staffing certainly remain serious challenges here in Oregon, hospitalizations for COVID nineteen have decreased in the last few weeks, and that's a welcome reprieve for our healthcare partners. Again, so XBB one point five, the new subvariant of Omicron, which is seeing a surge start up in the East Coast, hasn't really started up in the Pacific Northwest, but yet, but it will soon. And again, you know, while it doesn't appear to cause more severe disease than the other Omicron variants, of course, a large number of cases will be accompanied by increases in hospitalizations and deaths, and broader immunity from vaccination will help to slow the spread. So it's important for folks to get that bivalent booster if they have it, as this is the best protection against both infection and serious illness and death. So being up to date with those boosters, please use tests if you're not feeling well. Consider wearing masks when you're in a crowded indoor space. Improve that ventilation and filtration when you're indoors. If you're sick, stay home, please, and stay away from people who are at highest risk. And if you do happen to test positive, if you can, get assessed for treatments, especially if you're at higher risk or have an underlying condition. So the summary on XBB one point five is, you know, it's another Omicron subvariant. Not likely to be, you know, a big game changer and stop us in our tracks, but we know that all surges have had awful impacts, so we should do what we can to mitigate them. So the more folks with the booster, the better, both for individuals and for communities. And speaking of our communities, I'm gonna close out my update with an acknowledgement to our community. Benton County still has the highest rate of bivalent booster uptake in Oregon for people age sixty-five and older and for those fifty to sixty-four years old who are eligible for a booster. So sixty-three point three of eligible residents sixty-five and up have received that bivalent booster, and forty-three point three percent of eligible residents fifty to sixty-four have done likewise. Thank you, Benton County. Keep up the good work. If you haven't gotten that booster and you're eligible, please go out and get that done. Thanks.
Any questions for April?
I have a quick question. I know that the federal funding has not materialized to continue vaccination programs, but I've seen that we are still doing some here. How much longer are we projecting that we'll be able to do to provide vaccination clinics across the county?
Thanks so much, Commissioner Ojuro, for the question. It's absolutely true that the funding is drying up to go out and conduct community vaccinations. We've been working since vaccination was rolled out to ensure that we get vaccination out into the infrastructure, into those traditional places where people seek vaccination, and that's really what we're going to need to rely upon moving forward as our funding goes away. As of right now, we don't have community clinics and schools and Boys and Girls Club, those kind of locations scheduled, as our OHJ partners who are conducting them no longer are funded to do so. Instead, our focus has really been on connecting with our pharmacies and our providers to ensure that they have what they need to provide vaccination. And of course, here, our own community health centers are doing a wonderful job vaccinating folks who may not have access otherwise. And our immunizations coordinator is reaching out directly on a regular basis to our long-term care facility facilities to ensure that they have someone there. And in many cases, goes out herself to ensure that people can get that bivalent booster or any other vaccination for COVID that they might need.
Thank you. I also understand that there's consideration of letting the large firms now charge the full cost of the vaccine so that it won't be as affordable, and it may be uncovered by our private insurance. Is that also the trend that we're moving towards?
You know, I don't know what the final, where it's going specifically. We know that there's still no charge for the vaccine at this point, and then as long as we have that in place, we'll be able to ensure that people can get the vaccine at no additional cost to themselves. When that does change, there are some funding pathways that are being explored. So, yeah, we're in the midst of ensuring that we have ways to pay for the vaccine itself for people who may not be able to have insurance to cover it or to afford it otherwise. We have some one-time funding also to keep on some of the essential staff who have been really key in communications around COVID nineteen, as well as investigation of outbreaks and some of the logistics pieces. So we're really quilting together a continued response on a smaller scale than we have been.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a related question. You mentioned the earlier COVID. If you have any doubt, do your COVID testing in addition to staying home if you're sick and things that are hard-won or relearned lessons that we've learned during COVID. Federal funding for COVID tests, I mean, they've been readily available. What do you, how do you see that continuing? I guess, same theme as declining federal support. What's, what do we have in our future?
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, we are fortunate to have, to have rapid tests in our cache here in Benton County. Of course, these are not, these are resources that we need to get out to people because they expire. And so we recently were able to get more tests than, and of course, this trickles down from federal tests. As of right now, the government portal is open once again for every household to get free or for free tests per household through USPS.gov. Those will come straight to someone's door. In addition, the pieces in place for insurance provision of COVID rapid tests remain. With the cash that we do have in Benton County, our COVID response team receives requests and reaches out into the community to provide tests to certain locations where they may need them. And we'll continue to do that as long as we keep getting them. Every shipment at this point is a gift, and we don't know how much longer we'll be able to get them. We will, however, continue to assess our funds and the need. And if we have one-time funds that are eligible to be used for this purpose, and we have a need and a gap there, then we will consider purchase of tests for community use.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for April? Well, I appreciate your cherry report today. It's nice to know that we're the sun is shining sometimes and the days are getting longer and our infection rates are going down. So hopefully, that's a trend that will continue for us. Thank you. All right, next up, update on Benton County Talks Trash Process Work Group Darren is Greg Ritt. I see you there, Greg. You're, oh, that's right. You're on the back seat. All right, thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for continuing to make time for these bi-monthly updates. Want to accomplish a couple of things this morning. First of all, provide a general project status update for the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group. Also want to go through the schedule between now and the time that you will receive the final report from the work group. Sam is prepared to tee that up. We also have one vacancy to fill at the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is before the name. Want to ask for your thoughts on that and ask you to, that individual to fill the vacancy, and then any course any guidance, directions, questions you might have for us. So let's start with the vacancy, if it's okay with that in reverse order. The Planning Commission, as you well know, and thank you for appointing a full slate of really great candidates to the Planning Commission. Appreciate that. Planning Commission discussed at its last meeting who might be willing and able. And Andrew Struthers offered to serve the remaining portion of the project as a representative of the Planning Commission. So if the board is comfortable with Mr. Struthers filling that seat, we'd like you to endorse that in whatever way you feel is appropriate. I should mention there is just a slight wrinkle, which we talked about with the Planning Commission, because Catherine Bisco joined the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group as a member of the community and also as a then-serving city councillor from Fallon. Catherine has now been appointed to the Benton County Planning Commission. So if Mr. Struthers is appointed, we actually would have three Benton serving, currently serving Benton County Planning Commissioners on the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group. I have visited with Sam about that to see if that creates some kind of conflict. We don't feel that it does, but I want to be transparent with you all that we would end up having three Planning Commissioners on the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group.
I mean, it seems like if we don't, if we were to just use Catherine as the second seat, then we'd still have to find a community member to fill the other vacancy. So I'm comfortable having Catherine be fulfill her role, but maybe not necessarily as a liaison type. I don't know practically how that works. I mean, I feel like it's, I feel like it's okay, and I support Andrew being on Benton County Talks Trash.
Personally, I'm a little bit uncomfortable about having three Planning Commission members on the Benton County Talks Trash. It just seems like it's kind of a heavy load, and it's not the way we structured the process initially. But I'm not sure whether we have other alternatives, although I do know that there are several community members that have been very active on our subcommittees. It's quite possible that there might be someone on one of those subcommittees that would be interested in stepping forward to the voting table. How many meetings do we have left?
Sam, help me out. I think we have, is it four?
Three, three remaining meetings, one of which is this Thursday.
Yeah, so the time is fairly short to explore other interests. My recommendation is that we move forward with this. Uh my recommendation is that we move forward with this. It 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 is an interesting conundrum where we've got. Multiple people. However, taking time, I feel like at this point to get someone else up to speed. And bringing that back to you, especially with this week's um work group meeting. It doesn't leave much runway and uh Commissioner Rosero, to your point, though. So first of all, thank you to those that have served. We have some great, really great community participation. Just encourage those folks to continue to show up and we we will find a place to put them to work.
Sounds like you already have.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've had some really good. Mr. Yeager is obviously in the audience, but there's been a number of folks who've stepped up. In ways that it's just, yeah, we really appreciate it.
Well, uh given the time constraints, I I understand it. It would not be my preferred route, but. I I understand the situation.
I mean, the other thing we could do is just not appoint someone and, I mean, just with three meetings left, I mean, we could just be short somebody. I don't know.
Th- that is a possibility as well. Obviously, for the last couple of work group meetings, we have not had a planning commissioner. You know, we've had a vacancy, so we could continue in that fashion if that eases minds.
I think I'd rather go ahead and appoint.
That that would be my preference.
Do you prefer a motion or just distraction or what?
I think we do need a motion and a vote.
I move to appoint Andrew Struthers as one of the Plating Commission. Uh liaisons to Benton County Talk Trash. Is liaison the correct word or?
Appointee.
Appointee.
Yeah.
I moved to appoint Andrew Struthers as the appointee.
From the planning commission.
From the planning commission to the Benton County Talk Trash Work Group.
Yeah.
Second.
Uh all in favor, the I?
I.
I.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, Sam, are you prepared to present a project status update and then maybe just seamlessly move into the schedule that's on the screen?
So um it they're actually all in one. Um in essence, we are at crunch time. Sometime before midnight tonight, I will be sending out um the uh second draft. Of the overall work groups report. The subcommittees um have been meeting diligently over the last uh week or two. In fact, there was a meeting last uh yesterday afternoon from four to five thirty of the Education Committee. And there are two subcommittee meetings, capacity and legal uh later on this afternoon. We will get uh the body of their findings and recommendations and report. We will put them into the second draft that will go out this evening, as I mentioned. Uh at the very, very latest first thing tomorrow morning. And uh on Thursday, we um are meeting seven here. Uh which is the uh work group on January nineteenth is the opportunity for each of the subcommittee to have. Thirty to forty-five minutes each to talk with the entire BCTT work group as to. The evolution of their findings and and recommendations. The as a result of Thursday night's meeting um and final refinements. Uh in this ever evolving and iterative process, on uh January twenty-fifth. We will send out the draft three of the Benton County Talk Trash Work Group, which will go to SWAC slash DSEC and the Planning Commission. They will have to February tenth uh to provide their feedback and input on the report, which will then be rolled up and given. Uh to the work group members uh on February sixteenth, the one week before work group meeting eight. And um that is where we're going to start doing some in informal uh polling. Uh to really get down to what I's need dotting and T's needing uh crossed. Uh we'll make the changes that evolve from that. And then there will be informal worker polling in a public survey. That will go out um in that week between two twenty-seven um and or ten days between two twenty-seven and three six. We'll get all that rolled up and back in final time to get uh all that to folks. As soon as possible and as long as possible before the the um. The March sixteenth meeting and that is where the final polling um will take place. Members then will know where things stand and have an opportunity to submit their individual reports on the twenty-first. We will wrap all that up and bundle it up and send it to you on the twenty-fourth. And then it appears that the soonest weekend then make a formal presentation to you is March twenty-eighth. But obviously, that's contingent on the other pressing matters you have before you and that final date as to presentation could. Um flex. The uh we we are making good progress. Um it's a normal part of. Projects like these that as you get closer to closer to the final report. Little issues or challenges pop up and uh and as expected, they have here. And that's why the subcommittees now have been an integral part of this and they will continue to work it. So. I I will say uh to you Commissioners and uh those folks listening that the. You know, the draft that you are going to get on or about January twenty-fifth is a good, will be a good solid draft, but there still will be hanging chads. And issues that need to be refined and and driven towards consensus. But I'm confident with the dedication and focus and reasonableness of the participants, which has been amazing. We will be able to um wrap this up on time and we will know more. On the, after I get out the January twenty-fifth report, um if we can nail this literally on the twenty-fourth. Or not, but I'm I I have a reasonable belief that we can. So that's it for the overview status and sort of the next steps, key dates that you have on your screen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sam. I appreciate that. Uh do you have any questions for the board at this point or any guidance or direction that you need from the board? As we move into these final few steps?
Uh I don't, but I'm happy to take input and suggestions from them.
All right, thanks.
Uh I know Darren, that you have said um multiple times that you feel that strongly that the solid waste management plan needs to um be done. What do you envision as the schedule for uh that endeavor uh as we wrap up? Uh the Benton County Talks Trash Group?
Thank you. Uh yes, I do feel strongly that Benton County needs a sustainable materials management plan, kind of a holistic.
Yep.
Plan for how we handle all materials and disposal and hauling and kind of all those facets. There are a couple of uh constraints, I would say. First of all, we want to receive the recommendations from the work group. That will include a. Fairly comprehensive table of contents for what could eventually become a plan. Next, of course, would be feedback from you all and um deciding what we want to put in. A request for proposals. So once we have the feedback from the work group and the board, then I think we'll be prepared at the staff level. To issue some kind of solic- solicitation for qualified consulting firms to express interest and, you know, put forward their. Qualifications. The next, but not least, is funding for that size of a plan. So in speaking with other jurisdictions. Marion County, Lane County, Deschutes County, who've done similar solid waste management plans. Um including most recently Deschutes County, um it seems like the price tag for that is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's not a small investment. Um I'm guessing that with the level of interest around. Solid waste issues in Benton County, we probably should anticipate that being somewhat higher, especially because I think it would be important. To include a robust community engagement component. Um so. Having said that, I think we need to kind of let this play out, see how how best to pay for. And how much we think it's going to take to do the job that needs to be done on this issue in this place.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
So we probably wouldn't have anything out on the streets um. Till we have a new budget? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, uh thank you. I guess I didn't directly answer your question. I actually would like to put the uh RFP or RFQ out sooner. I think as soon as we get feedback from the board, we need to put that on the street. In some ways, that begins the conversation with the consulting community about who's available and willing and able to help us. And also what it's going to take to get the work done. So in some ways, it could inform. The budget allocation if we were to get that conversation going sooner. And I don't feel like there's a reason to delay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I I've got a related question. Uh as this process has unfolded. Question, questions have been raised and so, well, uh that's not in the scope of. Uh the current uh Talking Trash Work Group. Excellent questions. Uh will will the board receive the the final report and then just like we were talking about? Uh management plan, other, maybe other things that we should. Uh take care of, think about, take care of and probably come up with some kind of priority list of. Next steps. Do you envision that that is well part of the uh final report?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Malone, uh for asking the question. Yes, I believe the board will have an opportunity to look at. Uh where we were able to get to consensus around common understandings. And then as Sam mentioned a minute ago, there'll be some hang, he calls them hanging chads. Um there will be a few items that the work group was not able to get to either. Because of the complexity of the issue or because of the level of disagreement. And I believe the intention for the work group and for Sam's to present that to you in a way. That you can clearly see. Here are the things that the work group agrees in consensus should be done next. Here are the areas of disagreement and here are the kind of specifics around those different perspectives so that the board has a s- a sense for. Uh what might need to be done next. Um in addition to a sustainable materials management plan. And that really is the work that the. The subcommittees are doing right now is trying to iron out the differences, if you will, and really get to a solid consensus. Wherever we can. So Sam, do you have anything to add in response to Commissioner Malone's question?
In addition to underscoring what Darren just said, uh one helpful idea uh that the county. Should start thinking about, if I may be so bold, is to schedule in your commissioner meetings. Um you know, three or four work sessions a- a- as soon as uh April first. To to vet these, the work group report and identify. The um the issues that are in agreement and those issues that need further work or haven't had time to reach a full consensus yet. And there will be issues that we will not get to consensus on. But it's um the month of April and and early May. Um you know, to the extent in given your all your other tasks, you can start factoring in. Instead of, you know, fifteen minute, you know, uh conversations, this may be longer and more work session. Ask than formal meeting. Ask to get down and really dig into what the group said or thought and recommended. Including next steps.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. Sam, thank you. I know you flagged uh March twenty-eighth as kind of an on or after date. I would suggest the board give itself a little bit of time to internalize what you hear from the recommendations. And then get ready for whatever those work sessions need to look like. Um give yourself a little bit of time. To internalize, because there'll be a lot, there'll be a lot of nuances. There's some really good thinking, but those weeds are pretty deep. And you know, wouldn't expect you to be able to catch all of the nuances in a week or two. You probably want to give yourselves a little time to get ready and then. And then engage uh the work session conversations with open minds and, you know, our sleeves rolled up to see how and where we need to move forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for Darren or Sam?
Only just a big thank you to all of you at staff level and all the community members who've been participating in this process.
Thank you, and you're welcome.
And um same comment, thank you, Darren and Sam. And and look forward to getting this phase. Uh wrapped up.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item four point three, initiation of uh Development Code Amendments regarding stormwater. Greg Barrett. Is Gordon Curtis going to be with us?
I am here. I think Shay Steingas will also join us today.
Great. Good morning Commissioners and apologies, uh the title of the item is actually not uh initiation of amendments. You did that. Early December. Uh so this is an update. Uh we have had a planning commission hearing. Uh in the meantime, and this matter will be coming to you February seventh for a public hearing on the code amendments. And so we wanted to update you uh regarding what's taken place since. Early December when we uh last talked with you and make sure any questions or comments you have in advance of the hearing. Uh we're able to address. Um it doesn't need to take thirty minutes, uh but we. Uh it all depends on how deep you want to go into the details. And Gordon and Shay, thanks for joining as well. Um I'll I'll jump in, but uh feel free to uh add or. Correct as we go. Okay, so. Again, uh these are code amendments that are necessitated by changes to our. Uh requirements or mandate from state environment environmental quality. Uh we, the the big changes are reducing the threshold for requiring an erosion and erosion and sediment control permit. As well as post-construction uh detention and treatment of stormwater. And uh the Planet Commission held a public hearing on uh this January third. Um we had public testimony from one community member who also has been involved with the. Uh advisory group that Public Works has been. Leading, integrating with. And uh the Planet Commission's uh concern and. I think direction to to staff was uh they recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval, but they would like to see. More emphasis on the flexibility uh and alternatives to property owners regarding. That post-construction um stormwater detention and runoff and uh runoff treatment. Uh so the the concern the Planet Commission heard and also expressed, heard from the public and also expressed directly was. That a sizable number of projects are going to require detention and treatment of stormwater runoff that. Projects that wouldn't have in the past due to the lowering of the threshold. And that that can be both a significant cost to property owners as well as an administrative burden to county staff. In terms of reviewing permits and doing inspections and ensuring long-term maintenance of those facilities. And so. We discussed this at the Planning Commission and we have um discussed this among staff uh offline as well. The intent is that the uh the the stormwater code, the adopted development code provisions. Uh contain the framework for what's required and the processes for permit review, but that the details of. Exactly what situations are going to require, what types of treatment and detention. Um and how those structures or facilities are constructed. Um those types of details will be contained outside the code and support documents. That will be, uh a couple of things about those. They they will be more uh adaptable over time, more easily adaptable over time. Rather than through a code amendment process, there'll be the the purview of the county engineer to maintain. Uh and secondly, they'll be. Able to be interpreted and applied by the county engineer uh with some flexibility to. Ensure that the objectives of stormwater management are met. But that that is done at the low, at the lowest cost to property owners and and avoiding permitting and uh unnecessary infrastructure where we don't need it. So that's the the goal, the objective. And I I Gordon or Shay, anything you want to add to that?
I I should only.
I, I should only, I should only add that, uh, there, we did make minor, uh, adjustments to the code language this past week. Uh, I think you've taken a look at that and it was to, uh. It was to develop an exception for ag buildings. That were being built outside of the federal, uh, federally recognized urbanized area and, um. I think what that does also is it grants. Yeah, I, I think it better passes the straight face test when it comes to, uh, uh, when it comes to, uh, applying, uh, the code. I think it would be difficult to argue with, uh, with a, uh. With say a dairy farmer that his new barn needed some kind of treatment process when, when his cows. Regularly deposited manure in his fields immediately adjacent, I, that's an argument I don't want to have with people, so. Um, uh, those kinds of exceptions I think are, are warranted because they really kind of fall under O D A jurisdiction. Um, however, inside the urban area, it, those restrictions are still going to apply. I should also note that I neglected to mention that my boss Laurel buyer is also joining us today, so she is here if she can. If she needs to make any questions, it's not just Shay and me, so I think that's all I got.
Thanks, Gordon, and yes, Laurel, jump in anytime. Along those lines, uh, the long-term maintenance of stormwater facilities is a key consideration, and I think the last time we talked, there was still some. Some uncertainty about how we were going to ensure that, uh, we have developed. Code language and then a, uh. A standard or template agreement that the county engineer would enter into with property owners when. A stormwater treatment or tender treatment and or detention facility is constructed. To ensure that that property owner and subsequent property owners understand their responsibilities and are, um. How responsible to maintain that facility. It also would grant the county. The authority to inspect and direct corrections or maintenance to be done, and if that's not done to affect the repairs and. Build the property owner and, uh. Institute a lien on the property if the billing goes unpaid. Uh, we worked extensively with county council on this document and, uh. Vance, if there's anything you'd like to add to that aspect of it, feel free.
It, it really is pretty straightforward once, once we figure it out.
Right? And we had good examples to work from other cities who have. Gone here before us.
So that's my question that, that I know the cities have gone first and, and now we're, now the state's expanding to. County level jurisdiction and, and more rural residential rural development in general. But I also, uh. I agree with the planning commission, there's an awful lot of room for voluntary work and perhaps for, uh, funding in partnership with either the Benton Soil Water Conservation District or. The Mary River Watershed Council or other watershed councils, so I just, uh. Really hope that, uh, those groups are at the table and you take advantage of the opportunity for partnership and for collaborative landowner work as much as possible. Uh, in the context of the regulatory approach.
Good point, thank you.
I know that in the last biennial budget, um, the Mary River Watershed Council received five thousand a year from. Um, community welcome the budget overall, but under the umbrella of community development, and my understanding was that this was the focal area, so, um. But, but there are other partners that could possibly, uh, be equally useful.
Yes, and one of the. Elements that we're working with here is the concept of low impact development, that if there are alternatives that we. And or another organization can work with the property owner to implement to reduce the effective. Area of, uh, of impervious surface, uh, then we may be able to avoid needing to. Install structures or, um. You know, infrastructure types of, of treatment, uh, if, if we can kind of offset that through other means, so. Um, Laurel, Gordon Shay, anything you want to add to? That point?
I, I would add that, uh, I, I just to flush that idea out a little more is that the. We currently have selected some L I D methodologies that are pretty general. Um, Shay has assembled a, a fairly good skeleton of, of, of what I would consider to be, uh. Commonly used practices, um, and then our engineering staff is going to sit down and assess. I'm going to call it square footage equivalencies and, and so if certain L I D, uh, if certain L I D. Uh, the applications are used or best management practices are used and a credit is given to that use. Uh, to reduce the footprint that is being considered for, uh, post-construction stormwater treatment. So the idea is to use L I D, uh, uh, construction method, uh, methods. To reduce the assessment of the, of the quarter acre of, of impervious area and therefore. Exempt the applicant from the need for long-term, uh, maintenance and, and, and or long-term detention and treatment. Which would require, uh, you know, of course, a long-term maintenance agreement, lots of documentation, lots of repeated, uh, annual inspections. Uh, a greater burden on the homeowner, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to avoid that. And, and so the L I D approach is really to, i- is to give us. A, a benefit. That also makes the process, that gives the same benefit in the spirit of the permit. Uh, but also allows the, uh, the applicant some flexibility.
Thank you.
We got a couple of questions. I'll start, start you off with an easy one, Gordon, would you, um. Watch out, L I D.
I'm sorry, uh, L I D, another acronym in this maze of acronyms is, uh, low impact development. It's, uh, it's directly associated with what is also termed a green infrastructure, G I. Um, and it's basically the use of biosystems and soft technology. Uh, and, uh, and landscaping techniques, uh, um. Cariforming techniques to treat and detain water and to, uh, increase. The rates of infiltration as opposed to runoff of stormwater.
Great, no, thank you, uh. And there was a distinction, uh, that you made earlier, Greg, between, uh, what was it, uh, U G B? Or, or what's the official, uh, line where, where, uh. Where we're talking about making, you know, possibly making exceptions.
Right, it's, it is a little complicated around, uh, different geographic areas, so. The point that Gordon mentioned earlier was the federally recognized urbanized area, and that's a census derived, um. Boundary. It incorporates or includes, uh. The cities and urban growth boundaries of Corvallis and Philomath and some of the rural areas around that. Generally, uh. So that's the area that we have the most scrutiny and the most, the highest requirements for, um. Further complicating that within the urban growth boundaries. Of the two cities, uh. Which is a subarea of that federally urbanized area, uh, we. The, we, we utilize the cities, the respective cities, uh, standards if I'm. And if I'm understanding that correctly, so we kind of end up with, with three areas, the, the. More rural parts of the county, the federally recognized or federally designated urbanized area, which is based on, uh, population density, and then the. Um, urban growth boundary. Area, did I get that right?
Yeah, I, there, there are other little teeny nuances, but I won't, I won't go into them, they're too nitpicky. But the, uh, I think the important thing to recognize is that the, uh, the urbanized area. That boundary fluctuates and, uh, it's, it. It changes from time to time, I, I, you know, based on, on census data, and so as a result, um. In the, in the code language that we sent to you last week, Greg, we used the term. Unincorporated Benton County for the zone that, that, that would receive this exemption. Laurel brought up this morning that there is a nuance here, uh, it is, is the area within the urban growth boundary considered? Unincorporated Benton County? So then what we've done is we've granted, we may have to polish that language then and include a definition for the federally recognized urbanized area for. Uh, you know, just so that we have, so that we've met the letter of the code and. I, I should mention just to the board in general that the idea. One of, one of the problems, one of the challenges that we have is that we really don't want to have one set of. One set of standards or regulations for somebody on one side of a fence and a completely different set of standards and regulations for people on the other side of a fence. And, um, and we've done our best to, to, to try and alleviate that kind of, that, that kind of, well. He, he's got the same type of property that I have, why am I inside this limit and he's not, um. I. In some, to some degree, it's unavoidable, but we've done our best to avoid it. And, uh, I, I think that these kinds of exemptions are, 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 are testimony to that because obviously. There aren't a lot of large dairy farms or to reuse my previous analogy, there aren't a lot of large dairy farms within the U G B. Um, whereas out in the ag areas of the, of where there's more intensive agricultural. Uh, activity outside of the urban growth boundaries is where we would grant that exemption, so. Just as an illustration.
Well, I'll, I'll wait for a map.
Okay, so, so will we because evidently, uh, this is a little off topic, but, uh. I guess the, uh, the Census Bureau arbitrarily decided that they were no longer going to establish this, uh, uh, this boundary. And, uh, D Q said, well, wait, 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 wait a second, uh, we need that boundary to define all of our phase one and phase two communities. And so the Census Bureau then said, okay, we'll give you all the data and you can create the boundary. And so that's where it sits now, and so we'll wait for, uh, well, we'll wait for E P A. To, to, to get to the point where they've established those boundaries, so it may be a, a little bit of a wait. So.
All right, oh, well, I, I. Uh, appreciate the, the, the challenge of implementing this, uh, regulation, uh, and I will. Hope that Benton County continues to try to have somehow put common sense in, uh. In the implementation that, uh, we, um. Talk regularly about need for housing and I, I hate, uh, having more. Uh, complications and betterments to, to that goal, so, uh. Good luck.
It, it is a tall order, but, uh, at the same time, uh. We want to preserve the livability of the community in, in place where we live, uh, and so it's a balancing act and so. The more understandable and, and clean and simple. Approaches, the better and the more partners we have to help us implement, the better, so it's, um. A, a less onerous approach.
So I, I just wanted to say a couple of things as well. I wanted to tell staff, thank you for your work on this. And please pass along my thanks to the planning commission as well, um. I know that we have a, it looks like a March first deadline on this, so. Probably entailed some scrambling around and we don't, we don't see how the sausage is made, but I know you guys are out there making sausage, so thank you. Um, I support the planning commission's recommendation for, you know, the, obviously having to clear, um, an objective pathway and then calling it out. That there's other ways as well to be flexible. Um, and I guess I just wanted to highlight, this is probably preaching to the choir, but. You know, this is essentially mandate from D E Q, it didn't come with any sort of funding or recommendations on how to fill that gap. Which is just kind of frustrating because this has, this is very impactful to the county and to our departments, you know, especially to community development. And then also public works and environmental health and even records and assessment. So, um. Yeah, that's, it's. An issue I, I, I appreciate the work and I think we have to keep our eyes open for, uh, the impacts on that and potentially. Have to fill that gap, so. Um, I guess my, my main takeaway though is just thank you.
Thank you, yeah, good points all around, thank you. We will see you, uh, on February seven.
Yeah, yes.
For a hearing.
Oh, you're.
Public hearing at that one, yes.
Well, that, that will be your next update.
Yes. Yeah, we will get you the draft code, uh, here in the next week and. Then look forward to seeing you. The public here. Any other questions or guidance? Right, doesn't look, all right, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, next up is our consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
I will second.
All in favor of approving the, uh, consent calendar, uh, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, consent calendar. Is approved.
May I ask for a five minute break?
Certainly.
Thank you.
What's that?
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, we'll take a. A five minute break that will. Be maybe six minutes, come back at, uh, ten ten. We'll, we'll start back up with new business, 6.1 renewal of the 2023 Association of Oregon Counties' membership fees.
Commissioner, would you like me to jump in?
Please do.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Just wanted to bring to your attention the renewal of the 2023 Association of Oregon Counties' membership fees. There is a invoice in your packet. The total amount of the membership fees, including the voluntary dues assessment is $39,800 and 60 cents.
It's on page 44 of the packet.
Thank you. And we always like to bring this to in front of the board to discuss whether or not it's your intent to renew that membership. And if so, uh, what you would like to do about the voluntary assessment of dues. That's in the amount of $651.58 for the, I always have to look at the, thank you. The acronym always throws me. So just looking for a motion today, commissioners, after you've discussed it to approve whatever level you're interested in paying relative to these due membership, membership dues.
I'm comfortable approving the total amount and I can make a motion unless commissioners have other opinions they would like to discuss.
Would you refresh my memory on the voluntary assessments?
In the past couple of years, we have not paid the county forest just lands councils of voluntary assessment dues. Some of those are directed towards lobbying and other work with, at the state level that we have not necessarily been supportive of. So we've chosen not to pay for it. On the other hand, we are a member county. So I am ambivalent about whether to contribute to that or not.
I, I do remember, and it's been a while back of a discussion of, well, we used to have a do work on the federal level and that hasn't been done in a while. And so why are we, this was not from a Benton County commissioner, but just why are we continuing to pay for this even though we haven't been active in that arena?
I think that was the federal lands committee and the federal lands committee was disbanded and it all, you know, past dues were returned to the counties and the federal lands, counties group has reassembled as a distinct group from AOC as my understanding and raising their own funds. But Nancy, you, commissioner wise, you may have better information because you've been our liaison or the, our member on the forest just lands counties. And I, I just am not up to speed.
Uh, I, yeah, I don't really have much more to add. I mean, I don't know what you're looking for, whether or not to pay those voluntary.
Oh, I already said, I think we should pay them. So, okay.
And you, you made the motion?
I have not, but I can make one.
Is there any other discussion?
No. I'll move to approve the 2023 Association of Oregon Counties 2023 membership fees of $39,860.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next up, 6.2 American Rescue Plan Act Funding Review and Gregor. Charisa Steen, welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. Great to see you. We have a presentation, believe that's in your packet that Eric is gonna pull up to force. Do you want me to control it?
And that starts on page 55 in the back.
Sorry. Okay. Again, thank you, commissioners. Great to see you. As we discussed last several weeks, we wanted to come before you to talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act. Today's presentation will just focus primarily on overview. It's been a while since we've had a discussion about the entire amount of dollars. So that will be our focus today. Per our discussion last week in terms of the notice of funding opportunity, this will be something that we will continue to have dialogue about as we move forward. But likely in, in this late spring, early summer time on that. So sure I can get my calculator to work. Okay. So just to ground us here, first thing, well, I, I should also apologize. Charisa Steen is here with us today. She is our grant manager. I think you've all had the pleasure to meet her and we're excited that she is now with us and fully embedded into all of the discussions related to ARPA. And again, she'll speak a little bit specifically around our notice of funding opportunity and some of the results that we've seen. But I'll start out the, this morning and just again to ground us a little bit as a reminder, it was May of 2021 that we received our ARPA award approximately $18.1 million is what we had received at the time. This funding is specifically available to all eligible state territorial tribal governments in addressing, obviously, the impacts of the pandemic. The primary purposes really for areas of focus, one was, you know, how do you support the continued efforts? Response efforts to decrease the spread of the virus. How do we use it in terms of replacing lost public sector revenue? And I should just pause there for a minute. This was a, this is a subject of a lot of discussion around the final rules of ARPA and where they ended up landing was that ultimately you had the choice to calculate it yourself as related to lost public revenue, or you could take a flat $10 million. After we went through a lot of our calculations, it was much better for us to be at the $10 million mark because based on what we were seeing, we were going to likely be low that. So again, the nice thing about this particular category is very flexible in terms of the usage. This third area there, supporting immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses. And I think we've accomplished a lot of that through our notice of funding opportunity that we went through and again, Charisa will talk about that. And then finally, addressing systematic public health and economic challenges that have contributed to obviously inequitable response in terms of certain populations. So again, that is also addressed a lot within the dollars that we have provided to our community partners. And then the last piece here, all funds must be obligated, no later than December 31st. And other areas had a lot of conversation, what does the word obligated mean? And what we have, what has now been, been basically finalized is that we have to have those resources committed in some form of contract or some specific allocation towards a committed cost. So we don't necessarily have to have the dollars expended out of our account. Actually, we have another two to three years, I believe, in relation to the actual expenditure. So again, that gives us a little bit, but clearly we need to make sure everything is committed. So just a little breakdown in terms of this is the entire ARPA money to give you an idea of what, how the, how the dollars have been allocated at this point. So we'll just speak to the pie chart. 52% or nine and a half million dollars is specifically what we have used under the revenue replacement category. Again, as a reminder, obviously very flexible in terms of the use government service type. There's not a specific reporting requirement. This makes our job much easier in terms of eligible uses. 2% of the dollars, the smallest portion there is public health response. Most of this again is in the dollars that we granted out to our community partners and then 13% has been specifically to negative economic impacts. We do have $1.6 million. I'll talk here shortly about water and sewer. That's another specialty category that came through that we could actually use the dollars and we do have a set aside specifically that. And you can see right now, 24% of the $18.1 million is uncommitted. So this is the 4.2 that we talked about last week and at this point would remain uncommitted until obviously we have more information come May and June. Couple of things in terms of pointing out 51%, 51.2 to be exact, other funds have actually been expended. We've actually expended those dollars. And then again, the 24% is what we have uncommitted at this point. So there's no legal commitments or anything that we have put towards those resources. So that just gives you an idea from a summary standpoint.
Well, Rick, I do have a question for you regarding the water and sewer. Yeah, it's my understanding talking with Gary Stockoff, our public works director, that it looks like those projects are likely to come in much higher than that in excess of 2 million. It sounds like maybe even a little higher. So what provisions are you making to address that? Or are we looking at the, the funding and revising the funding? What's the?
Thank you for that, Joe. And actually I have a slide for that. And so I will touch exactly on that here in just a couple, a couple. So let me first start with the biggest category, the 9.5 million, which represents the biggest pie chart. Again, give you a overview of where those dollars have been allocated and expended. About 2.5 has been specifically to facility remodels, the biggest portion, of course, being here in the Kalapua building. I think you all know that we put a variety of different resources into the Kalapua remodel and some of it was the ARPA dollars. We have also put remodel money into the district attorney's office specifically in relation to that particular area. We also also still here, we had the HVAC system that was put in place. We've also done some remodel to our data cooling systems, our IT systems. So that has been an improvement. And then there are also remodels underway had relates to the Avery building that has been specific. So again, about $2.5 million of our resources, all under the revenue replacement has gone specifically to that. The next area, a little over a million dollars has been what to what I called a program revenue support. So there are three primary areas that we have dedicated resources where we have seen specifically lost revenues due to the pandemic. NAP is one of those, obviously to no surprise and not having a fair for a couple of years had a impact in terms of the revenue. So there were dollars that were allocated. Not the whole amount that they wanted, but the ability to get at least some of the resources to help recover some of the revenue. Bitneri Transit is another program that we have talked about. You know, that we had to have a variety of discussions with our, our partners in terms of being able to move through this current fiscal year that we're in. We were able to make that transition and come to an agreement on it, but it did require us to put about $210,000 into that. And then probably our largest piece is related to our fleet program where we had to put resources into this. And this was primarily with our external fleet. What we had seen from during the pandemic was a relatively large amount of resources that well, basically expenses were in excess of revenues. And so that was obviously to no surprise. There was a lot, again, impacts or business that we had to be able to fill out. So all of that million dollars was essentially to, to get us into balance. So that was, that, that particular category. The next one, obviously you're very familiar with is the J CIP land acquisition. These are the portion of the dollars that we had used in relation to our acquisition of the land for the north side. And then of course, we have other resources that would eventually come from our negotiation with the Oregon Judicial Department for their land credit portion related to this. I'm just continuing the last four areas to mention real quickly. A little bit smaller areas, employee recognition. This was one of the first allocations. I think this was day two of my time here with you and that decision was made and gone through that process and we successfully implemented that through the, the additional resources that were provided to our accounting employees for the work throughout the pandemic. Information technology is another area that we have put resources into. This is primarily specifically, one is for our website redesign work that is underway with our IT team leading. And the other one is called ring topology. Topology, can't say that exactly right, but essentially improving our internet connections, which were in the middle of, of that as well. So about $272,000 total. Houselessness program support. You all know that you put a half a million dollars into hope. Specifically in terms of the recommendations, you've heard Suzanne talk about that and the hiring of the two positions. We've also used it for very, various community supports. And then right at the very beginning, again, one of your first allocations was $75,000 to Corvallis Housing First. And then last. And then last, but certainly not least, very important, our ARP administration, which you were all very gracious to allocate in is the reason Sharisa is sitting here with us today. And so one of the things, again, I want to toot her horn a little bit is that she's clearly kind of come in and helped in terms of the management of all of our ARPA resources. But the other really value in terms of her position is really moving us towards more accountability around all of our grants. She is already well underway. She's established a stakeholder group of resources across the county that is helping her look at a lot of the work that had been done prior to her arrival in relation to processes. And if we get a little bit of time, I'd love for her to be able to share with you that great work again. Just really proud that she's come in and recognized the importance of stakeholder engagement and all of our customers being a part of the solution as opposed to just coming in and saying, okay, this is the way it needs to be. And that's really what we want to do and the way we deliver services. So again, if there's some time, it'd be great if she could just share with you. And then lastly, to Joe's question, we have one point six million dollars that has been dedicated specifically to our water, sewer and broadband. That's the category specifically. We made a dedication for our service districts across the county in terms of doing an assessment. So we did contract outside of ARPA dollars to do a assessment on all of the various service districts, as Joe pointed out earlier, that is telling us we're right around two point two million dollars of upgrades. So we're at that place right now where we would need to prioritize. So I should say, having looked at the assessment, what it does is it really outlines sort of those immediate type things, those things that are maybe more moderate and then perhaps more long term. So clearly, we're going to need to analyze it and think about, okay, what are some of the immediate things that need to be addressed? But Joe, to your question, one of the things that we are deeply engaged in right now, both at the state and federal level is about how can we get resources specifically for this? So our federal partner CFM, state and federal partner CFM, has indicated already that that they both believe this is a strong case in that we actually have an assessment. And and the other thing, I think it's very, very important about this is where our service district are located. These are the role parts of our community. And I think that, so we are definitely going to be looking at opportunities at the federal level. Michael's already beginning to look at current programs, but he also believes this is a very, very good case for earmark project, which we will be making requests in March. So that's one area. And then we've also talked about to our state partners, as you know, we have a priority around this. It was a bit vague. And they believe that this one again is a really good, good project to take forward. So while our sources are not enough, we also know that those are flexible. So if we're able to identify resources to free up some of the ARPA dollars, it may provide us some opportunities in other areas that we have all discussed in in terms of meeting. So Joe, does that answer?
Thank you, Rick. I just have one follow up in terms of working with CFM. I absolutely support that. And I think that is definitely a path to success. Are you pursuing the two point two million through CFM? Are you just pursuing the gap funding if you're
Pursuing all of it. It's and again, that was their recommendation as well. I mean, certainly, we could look at it from a gap standpoint, but this is, you know, I think this is a a very viable project. And again, I think both the state and federal partners have said, hey, this is the real, real parts of your your county and ones that, you know, certainly have have a huge need. So I think I think we have a good chance of this, Joe.
Great, thank you.
So with that, I am going to turn it over to Sharisa and she's going to talk to you and we're going to kind of get now into the specifics around the two point six million dollars that you all allocated and she can give you again, a little bit of breakdown. I think also she has another attachment that's in your packet that gives you a listing of, if you don't remember, listing of all of the nineteen different grants that she will refer to. That's also outlined in your packet. So with that, I'll turn it to Teresa.
Wonderful. Thank you guys so much for being here. I'm happy to be here with you and hopefully we can all enjoy this walk through. This is the fun part where we're handing grants out to the community. So that's really interesting. So like Rick had mentioned, we granted out around two point six million and to twenty twenty-two for our first notice of funding opportunity that we provided to the community. That is a total of nineteen grants that went out to individual organizations that surround our area. It's been really nice. They've all been working towards their goals. However, they've been a little slower in expanding. A lot of that is getting the ball rolling. A lot of these organizations have smaller financial services or accounting departments, you know, to get that part rolling as well. So it comes about, this document here said twenty-three point three percent. Since then, they've filed their quarterly report for December, the end of December. So that takes them to about thirty percent expended for the whole county. Now that's, you know, we're getting close to the end of date for these grants, which is to have it expended or obligated by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. That's rapidly approaching. So because of that, we have six programs that are kind of on our watch list for their spending to try and help maybe meet with them and coach them through some ideas that they can do. Again, like Rick had mentioned, there's a lot of questions on what does obligated mean? So we're kind of going through that and working through with some organizations. Sometimes they'll come back to me and was wanting specific examples and so help them with that. Or if they come to me with concerns, saying it looks like we might have to give back monies. I can say, well, you know, what are you got going on? It's like, okay, no, this will be obligated. That's totally fine. We're trying not to take back any monies if possible, but it might change how things go if they apply for another grant that's coming up in the future. If they're having a hard time making their expenses for this first grant.
Teresa, if I might, just for the commissioner's information, so to Teresa's point about the two point seven million dollars, it just as a reminder, you actually allocated two point four and then you came back with a discretionary grant. So one of your nine, one of those nineteen grants was outside of the nose. An opportunity that you did for specifically unity shelter. So just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yeah, thank you. So with that, I do have some numbers here, too, if you're wanting to know more specifics on what we are looking at for those who are low expended. One of them, which we do have a work on is the city of Corvallis is still working on their actual program budget and what they're looking at and going before their board of commissioners. So we have not even expended those funds to them yet. So we're still in a very holding pattern for that organization. I want you guys to be aware of that. Other than that, there, like Rick had said, there is a list of organizations that I had attached to this presentation so that you can refamiliarize yourself with that. And if you have any questions about them, please let me know. I'm happy to answer them now or go research them and get back to you with an answer. Then what we have next are some great success stories. So you know, there's some worries about expenses, but I want to make sure and share exactly how things are moving along for those who are using our funds. So this one's from Corvallis Sustainability and they're working to get food and funding out to families so that they can have meals. And so they have met sixty-three percent of their demand by awarding in gift cards. About forty-three, a little over forty-three, almost forty-four thousand. Eight hundred and eighty-two individuals have asked for and received seven thousand three hundred and eighty-two meals for a total of just over seventy thousand. Fifty-one unique locally owned restaurants, farmers and food businesses are supported through this program. Looking to be more, but at the current, almost thirty-eight thousand. And they created seven new partnerships within the Benty County Organization, helping with their goal in providing food to people. Along with hosting three giveaway events to support local non prop farmers markets. Now they have supported these with a bunch of pictures and a lot more stories. And if you guys would like that, please let me know and I can provide that as well. There's so much here. I wanted to highlight that the bookers just couldn't make it onto today's presentation.
And I just might add, I mean, this is exciting for me because having been right on the front end of this and getting all the applications and having the conversations with folks. And this one was a really exciting one in terms of the the passion and effort around this. And again, I think that what was unique about this is that it really was kind of a two goal piece because one, families in need, families that need meals, individuals that need meals. But the other part was local business, focusing on local business with the gift cards. And these gift cards were specifically only could be used at these particular organizations that were partnering with them. So you're also supporting local business at the same time. So again, I just think it's nice to see the results now after this. And I know they were very excited and committed for the the resources.
Yeah. And so then the other success story we have is the Unity Shelter, which I find is one that you guys had elected to put on top of our original NOFO awardees. So I thought it was really nice if they came forward with some success story highlights that they wanted to provide. And that is they're transitional to housing members of the community, which you guys know. They have the two programs that they're using these ARPA funds with and that's Safe Place Transitional Housing and Non Congregate Shelter at Third Street Commons. Both of these programs provide individual living spaces, shared cooking and other facilities, access to management services to help them get back on their feet, along with a sense of dignity and belonging, which can be really hard and crucial for the rehabilitation of these community members. And then since July, when they received our ARPA funds, they have been able to serve forty-four people at Safe Place and forty-one people at Third Street Commons. They've been able to move twelve people into permanent housing and another ten people being served in medical rest room rooms. And they just wanted to make sure that I conveyed their gratitude for these ARPA funds. It has been critical to providing the skilled staffing required to support the houseless neighbors that we have. And they're just really, really thankful for all that we have done at the county here. So and that's essentially the main report that I have from the community grants that we've provided. But is there any questions you guys might have?
I guess one of my questions is, especially with success stories and anyone where we have photos, it's a great thing to highlight in our county newsletter.
Sure.
So.
Again, pass those along to the person who builds that newsletter.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll we'll definitely work with Cory on this. And I think now's a good time because this is our second quarterly report that we received. So now we're starting to get to the point of you can begin to see some real data and information. So with all the ones, I think, as Sharisa said, there's a few that are that she's still working with to get their reports in. But I think it's a great opportunity right now to be able to do this. I think, you know, Sharisa also had indicated that we need to be really watchful on on some of these. I mean, again, we we want to be supportive partners and a lot of these are smaller organizations that need a helping hand. And we knew this when giving the dollars out. That was, I remember, one of the things that came out of the federal presentations is you need to be prepared to really help a lot of these organizations because they're not used to getting these federal dollars and the and the requirements. I think as she highlighted, City of Corvallis and their business loan program or business grant program is the one that I would say is probably the most concerning at this point. It's two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And so I think we need to really watch. I know they've had transition, obviously with Kate Porshaving. That's huge. I've I've talked to their interim person and and I know they're working on it. So and and they're certainly in need, but I think that's that's an area we're going to need to watch closely.
So is that a an area where there's potential to take back money and then regrant?
Yeah, and that was a conversation I actually did. Joe and I actually both had conversations with them. I think they were very committed, but we also were expecting a proposal in December. So I it might be worth having a conversation about, okay, is there an opportunity here to maybe think about the next round or some something to do around maybe making the program a little smaller or something to that effect. But we haven't entered that discussion yet, but that that is probably the one I would center the most. The other five, I think there's still conversations that we need to have with them on the watch list, but not ready yet to say that, you know, there's potential reallocation.
I have one last question, then, and that is with those six programs on the watch list or grantees, are the are the remaining thirteen all expending pretty much as expected?
They are, yes. They're close. I'm going to say close. There's maybe three or four that are where we'd expect them to be. So fifty percent expended with, you know, six months more to go. And then the rest are reasonably close, maybe seventy-five percent expended to where we'd expect them to be. But close enough to where they're not like in our danger zones yet. Because of course, when they first get the monies, it can take a little time to get things rolling. So we expect the first quarter to be a little dry and then just kind of snowball into more expenses coming in as the projects progress.
I know one of the specific examples, Trillium, which was a unique project that was really about trying to get more mental health workers into it. And so part of it was around a recruiting piece. So they had a specific position that came in to have a very elaborate recruiting. They hired them and then they left. And so so I know that as Sharisa was sharing with me, they were one that was a little bit lower. You would expect that, you know, things happen, right? And so again, good, good program. I think that you will eventually see good results, but they had a little bit of setback with their their recruitment.
Right, just an FYI, next Tuesday, Jerry Sorte, who's the acting director for our economics development office, he will be coming before the board as part of our information sharing session, providing an update on their office. So I just wanted to put that on your radar.
Well, I appreciate, you know, we have a list of nineteen organizations and it's nice to get a little more depth and these are working really well. These are okay and these are, like I say, on the on the watch list. So I appreciate that. Making something that was two D into three D is is I think really helpful. And it reminds me of wonderful process, NOFO. I don't even remember what that means, Rick. I think set up a thoughtful process, didn't didn't rush it, made sure that you tried to rush it. With a very optimistic January timetable and and that darn reality hit and and you know, extended the the time timetable for getting this going. But I really appreciate those initial efforts and thrilled that you have Sharisa here to take some of the some of the load off. You know, this is a great effort. Well, like I say, it's nice to get some detail on on how it's working now that we're halfway through the the first year.
And commissioners, I would imagine the March report, how we probably should come back again at that time. I think we might want to have some more in-depth conversation. We we did again, didn't want to, you know, alarm anyone. Again, it's things, things happen and we want to make sure we support all of our partners. But come March, if we see some that are still maybe on the watch list, probably should have a little bit more in-depth conversation about, you know, steps to move forward. But at this point, I think, you know, we're just working hard to try to make sure they're successful.
That's going to be, sorry, that was going to be my question is what happens if there are any organizations that are just unable to use their funds? It sounds like we can have that conversation at a later date.
I I think so, commissioner wise. I I think, you know, again, I want to be thoughtful about the folks, I think you do too, and that again, the city of Corvallis is the only one that I just worry a little bit more about. That's the reason I I mentioned them maybe more by name. But the others, I think, you know, we we keep working with them, but then revisit again in March. And then I'll probably need some of your direction as it relates to, do we want to consider some other options? And we'll have options for you at the time. But right now, our goal is to make them successful. So hopefully, we can come back in March and say we got great results for all nineteen. So hopefully we can come back in March and say we got great results for all nineteen.
So I, as I understand it, you'll be coming back with another report to us after the Q three reports.
Yes.
Yeah. Excellent.
Well, this reminds me, I I've yeah, been involved with some um grants for the Kings Valley Community Center and other uh projects. And obviously, there's no paid staff and uh
Yeah.
So people would get excited, oh, we got the grant. Oh, well, no, don't get too excited now. Are you, we have to perform. It's hard, so I I understand from firsthand experience how this uh process can can play out and and a lot of organizations do. Depends on a few key people um moving things forward. And you you if if they can't do it or leave, then that that can leave a a large hole.
And commissioners, one one thing I failed to mention that within the next thirty to sixty days, part of Sharice's position in being here and part of our responsibilities as the ARPA dollars is that we need to do site visits. We need to go out and and check in terms of accountability. So she has uh already developed an assessment plan in terms of going out and doing some monitoring. And again, that will give her more information in terms of where things are at to be able to share. But uh again, I think that's an important feature that sometimes is forgotten on the the use of federal dollars. If we're going to be giving it out in the form of grants, we need to go and check, make sure things are happening the way they said they are.
Uh, I think that's a great idea. Uh, one-on-one contact and um uh can get a better sense of the organization. Who's who's doing the heavy lifting.
And we don't want to be part of any of those horrible stories about money gone to the wrong places. No, not that I would expect that from Benton County.
Well, and and you just mentioned, I think, a key word is federal dollars. And and there's um restrictions and expectations that come with that. And we might, we need to make sure that that that's conveyed to the all all the recipients. Anything else?
Okay, well, uh, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, appreciate.
Report. All right, like I mentioned at the beginning, we will put uh six point three at the end. So uh we'll go to six point four discussion and potential approval of letter of support for the Green Belt Land Trust regarding the Community Pass Grant pathways for North Benton County uh communities.
We're just looking for a motion to approve?
Um, sure.
I I did, I'll go ahead and jump in, Commissioner Malone, if you're online. So I apologize about the short turnaround time on this. We were uh notified last Friday. I saw the request yesterday, which was the day that we were closed. I quickly just took their uh suggested letter, draft letter, and adapted it to our needs. I do notice that I was really advancing the date there. It says twenty twenty four on it instead of twenty twenty three uh at the top. And so I I do need to correct that. And but I would ask for the board's approval of this, a letter of support uh for the grant application for the pathways for North Benton County communities.
And and just uh giving a little detail, this is mainly, well, for for a study for a um bridge across Highway ninety nine W that would uh connect our Jackson Fraser Wetlands on the east side to O Owens Farm and um not sure that was mentioned, but the Samaritan um organization also has property um south uh adjacent to and just south of Owens Farm. So there's, there's at least three um partners in this um trail uh effort. I I think it's a a great um piece of the puzzle.
And just to clarify, the grant is for the refinement plan? Is that correct and not for the actual construction?
Correct.
Okay.
We heard about this from Suzanne and team a while back because we're a part, our partner in this as well.
Okay, well, I do support it and I'm happy to make a motion. Uh, I move to approve the letter of support uh with the date corrected uh for Green Belt Land Trust, Community Path Grant Pathways for North Benton County Communities.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Uh, might not, but oh, dot. But that's the letters.
Hmm, that says in the in the address of. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Taking the draft and making it ours.
Commissioners, I'll go ahead and jump into six point five if you're ready.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is just house cleaning, a renewal of National Association of Counties twenty twenty three dues in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars.
I'd be happy to make a motion for approval of the NACO dues in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. Second.
Uh, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries.
As Commissioner Wise pointed out, it looks like we need to give them our address change as well.
Hmm, thank you. All right, um, next up, the item six point three uh discussion regarding transition planning for carrying out uh county administrator duties. Um, Joe Kirby and Tracy Martino, why don't you, Tracy, why don't you come up to the uh desk?
Good morning. Sorry, that was my computer. Sound like you're being haunted or something. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, as you're aware, I have submitted my resignation as of last week. And my target date for departure is no later than March fifteenth, sometime between March tenth and March fifteenth. And uh in order to uh to move ahead, I did meet with the commissioners individually last week and try to get some feedback from you as to what your intentions were. And it's my understanding and talking to all three commissioners individually that you do have an interest in appointing an acting uh county administrator uh during the course of time that the recruitment is actually going to be going on. And so really, your discussion today is, you know, what are those next steps? I did receive a a number of names from the board uh during my individual conversations. I did ask Tracy to reach out to those individuals and see if they had an interest and willingness to serve. And so Tracy is actually going to lead the conversation today relative to uh how you would like to go about determining who you would like to take on the acting county administrator role. And so Tracy, with that being said, I would like you to uh go ahead and carry the baton.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, I thought a good place to start would be to talk about the predicted timeline for the search. And that kind of provides an overarching context for uh filling the interim role. And in twenty seventeen, we posted county administrator job in February. And Joe ultimately started in August, so that was a six-month cycle period. I recommend that we be prepared this time around, uh given the uncertain climate of the uh workforce availability and uh just some other factors that influence a successful search that we give it four to eight months or plan for four to eight months. And that is if we start in February, so that would roll forward if we started later than that. But I think that we're in a position to where we um absolutely could do that. And then um I'm hoping to get on the board agenda in the very near future to, in a separate meeting, to have a discussion with you about that search plan.
Are you ready for questions and discussion?
Sure.
I would like to say that I think that we have uh that thanks to Joe and his tenure um and the leadership team that we have now, we are really well positioned to recruit uh and it should be an attractive opportunity for someone that's looking to serve as a county administrator. So I want to thank you and um the whole team as well. Excuse me. And um I also sorry, distracted myself, uh want to uh bring up the fact that we've been talking for at least a year about um a deputy county administrator or some sort of a a role like that. And I would like to see, I'd like to know the timeline for that as well, so that we can have that position at least fully fleshed out and described um before uh we um post an advertisement so that any potential candidate knows that there will be a little bit more depth of support uh for the role.
I have a question on that. I I I've been thinking about that a little bit too. Would it be more attractive for a potential candidate to have that sort of set in stone when they come in? Or would that be something that they would like to have a hand in kind of deciding for themselves?
I think it makes sense to have a position created and to have a job description, at least in draft form. Um, and to say that this is a position that will be there. Um, clearly, it would be best if that uh incoming person made the hire um and had the opportunity to do any refinement of that position, you know, where it got flown as a recruitment. But um I think having um demonstrated county commitment to the role uh would be really important as a part of the recruitment process.
Commissioners, we do have a draft job description uh that Warren and I have worked on. Uh, that draft job description will actually be submitted to uh HR today before five P M as part of our budget process. It is being submitted as a uh policy option package. And uh then it will be uh go through the budget process and knowing how you all feel about it. I I have a feeling that that will, as likely, but of getting approved as part of that process. But we are submitting it to kick off the process.
Thank you, that's helpful to know. I just would like to, and I'm just one commissioner, but I would like whoever the new county administrator is to have some flexibility and, you know, once it doesn't hurt to have a draft, but, you know, I would uh just like them to be able to, if they have input on that, I would like to give them the space to do that.
Clearly input, I just want to assure to the best of our ability that that any candidates that we um recognize the need for that role. So that's, that's my main concern, sure.
Well, and I don't think there's any better uh indication of our intentions than to have it in the next year's budget.
Yep, agreed.
And there 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 will be flexibility on um some flexibility on duties depending on who the administrator is and what wha- what they they feel like they they need to uh be successful.
Commissioners, I think the key right now for that respective position is just to get a placeholder in the budget. Uh, the job description will have to be uh evaluated from a classification and compensation perspective. And so it's really important that we at least get something uh in. We've tried to write the job description broadly enough uh so that HR can uh uh class it, uh and then I think there'll be opportunity to tweak it at a later date if need be. But uh the key is to get the placeholder uh in the budget. And uh as you're aware, this is position is really taking a vacant position that we have had over the last year and repurposing it for uh the this respective role.
Okay, and I just had a comment on the timeline, uh, well, one, I think we ought to get going on this as quickly as possible, but uh not limit ourselves to a certain date when this is is filled, just sooner the better. Uh, I'm reminded of our search for the CFO that took a long time. And uh hopefully, a- and and worked out, I think, really well for us. Uh, but uh I, we we can have goals in mind, but uh I I I don't want to feel like, well, it's five months, we've, this is, this is a pretty good candidate. Or I I just don't want to be in that uh position. And and I think, I think you said forty eight months is uh timetable and that that seems reasonable. And uh but just uh I keep in mind, we have to um make sure we have a quality person in in place at the end of the process.
Right, so I I agree with Commissioner Malone there, but I do want to call out the fact that I think the most important thing would be to make sure that we are not leaving any candidates feeling like we're wasting their time, like we're taking too long to let them know one way or the other.
Yeah, a rolling kind of a deadline would be the best thing, open until filled. Um, but uh I that's the way we have approached a lot of our leadership positions, correct? So we start reviewing applications at a certain time, and if we've got a great pool, we just move ahead.
Um.
Um, so, yeah, but I completely agree with you. We wouldn't want to leave anyone dangling if we were really interested in them. That would not be in our interest at all.
Yeah, um, when we have our meeting, I'd like to take a deeper dive and also take the opportunity between now and then to gather a little bit more research in terms of reaching out to uh some search firms and just kind of getting an understanding of what they're seeing right now in terms of, you know, quality candidates and availability and some things like that. I think that'll help us to um get a better gauge on our success.
And would we anticipate using a search firm this time around?
I am inclined to recommend a search firm.
Okay.
And and I can explain the reasons behind that uh when we meet.
Uh, commissioners, it's our intent to add the recruitment for the regular full-time position uh onto your Thursday agenda, where you're having departmental dates from the sheriff's office and the district attorney and juvenile, that's a opportunity. I haven't looked at calendars yet, uh but we may be able to add it to the end of that meeting. And that's probably the soonest that we can do it, or we can add it to next Tuesday's uh regular board meeting.
So I, if we were going to add it to that meeting, I would rather tack on extra time at the end of the meeting and then allow the other meeting participants to leave if they would like to, or obviously they could stay.
Understood. So I think back to really the discussion for today is uh really what direction you want to go with a uh acting or interim county administrator.
So I, it's a lot to consider. Um, and Joe, as you mentioned, we all have had a chance to chat with you and and I've been thinking about it quite a bit, as I'm sure my fellow commissioners have been. And it's a it's a challenge because there's not just one perfect candidate at this time because everyone is busy, you know, our organization is busy doing really good work and everyone has a lot on their plate. Um, so that's been my my biggest concern is just who would we be able to sort of pull away um from their department and um and and then what's going to happen to that department? Um, and then who would be best to oversee all of the different departments? Um, I think one thing we talked about that we need to make very clear is our expectations of what the interim role would be. And I think at least in my discussions with Joe, it's focusing on, um, I forget the wording exactly, but keeping the ship afloat and just kind of, you know, keeping everything that needs to happen going and not adding new um projects to the plate. And maybe Joe or Tracy can help me with describing that. I I don't know.
I I I would jump in too and say that uh uh keeping the ship afloat is definitely uh uh the main of well, a a core objective. But we also have a couple of really big projects going on that I think that we need to can keep an eye on. And one is the Justice System Improvement Program, the May Bond Measure. And the other is the Benton County Talks Trash Process and making sure that all of the work that's associated with that continues. So um uh then those are, those are really big projects. Um, I I I think that we are really in a great position. We have, as I mentioned before, fantastic leadership team. There are lots of people that are, um, we could tap for this role. Um, I uh would like to refer back to the um information that that Joe shared with us um it by email, and that is that we have an additional candidate to consider, and that is um Health Department Director Suzanne Hoffman. I I really am inclined to um uh consider her candidacy very highly because of the fact that she's worked with all the departments she's in, her um. Uh, consider her candidacy uh very highly because of the fact that she's worked with all the departments she's in her um. She's connected to it through a lot of work groups with many of these different initiatives that we've got going on. And she is intending to retire anyway, so she does not have um. Uh, as we have mentioned before, any aspirations for the county administrator role as a long-term objective. Um, additionally, she's served as an interim uh uh agency head uh with the state of Oregon. She's played this kind of interim role before. She's very experienced in in navigating the kinds of things that we need to navigate uh in an interim role. Uh, so I think that she would uh be great at continuing to keep us going and to set us up for success uh with a new. Uh, county administrator.
I would like to go back to the question that I asked uh of Joe and Tracy. If they have anything they would like to add, if not, that's okay too. Which was just talking about the um expectations of the role.
Yeah, and Commissioner, I I am developing a transition list, uh so whoever you select, I'll need to. Sit down and go through that transition list with them and bring them up to speed on a variety of uh projects, large and small. But I I think when we, when you're talking about an internal candidate uh to serve in an interim role. Uh, for the county administrator, I think the two keys uh are the expectations being very clear. Uh, and number two, how long are you expecting them to do that for? And, you know, I the a number of the names that I heard from individual board members last week. Uh, are folks that I have lots of confidence in. Uh, and yet, as you mentioned earlier, they're all. Uh, very busy uh with their own departments and Commissioner Ogero mentioned a few of those large projects that are currently going on. Uh, not the least of which is our budget process uh as well. And, you know, Rick Craig, our CFO, and I had targeted March fifteenth. As part of our regular budget calendar that we proposed last fall, uh that March fifteenth would be the. Date that we complete the recommended budget. And so I think we're still on target to make that happen. And so that. Is helpful that I'll be able to stay on long enough to uh provide input to that process. And so, uh, but that that will still continue, you know, after I leave up through the month of May and early June.
So just to confirm that, um, based on the common uh. Concepts that came out of Board of Commissioner meetings last week, we're talking about the internal candidates, about potential for it. Depart existing department directors to fulfill this role. I just wanted to get confirmation there. Okay? Um. So uh I looking at my notes from those meetings from last week. And just to kind of refresh memory and maybe to reinforce some of the feedback Joe gave you in those meetings also. Is that there did seem to be some be these commonalities is that it was important to maintain momentum on key projects and initiatives. That there were uh some big competing departmental priorities. Uh, the capacity for additional workload was really important to you. Uh. Just curious at this point in time or later in this meeting, if you were interested in actually hearing recommendations from Joe. On any of the candidates, uh just wanted to raise that in your awareness as well.
Yeah, I. No, I don't know about that specific thing. I have other things that I would say though, but I don't want to.
Uh, I I I think we have to um. Um, continue our conversations with with Joe just to um. Um, go over the candidates and and um. Like you were saying, um. Uh, what kind of capacity for additional work? Uh, five individuals have and and, you know, get a clear. Uh, idea of their current situation and that how um stepping into the. Uh, acting administrator role and uh you you back what they're currently um doing.
I think that if um if Tracy and Joe have that information, it sounds like there were discussions with each of these people. Uh, that would be helpful. Um. And I think part of my consideration and. The preference that I voiced was partly because if we're looking at a duration of six months, possibly longer, I I um. I think that's a very long time for someone to take away from their core departmental responsibilities. Um, and. Uh, given the situation of the Health Department, that we knew that this transition was coming up at the Health Department, Suzanne leaving the role of director there. Um, she has capable deputies that are are able to step in and take over for that. Duration as we also hire for a permanent position there. So um, I. It's it's the duration of responsibility. It's part of my concern. Yeah.
Agreed. Um, and I'll just, I want to say too that all of the names that we. Uh, collectively put out there. I mean, I have faith in all of those individuals that they could do the job interim, you know. Just, you know, wanting to. Have the best outcomes for the county, wanting to have the best, you know, best case scenario, least amount of stress on the individuals. And all the departments. Um, so I I do agree with Commissioner Ogero that. At this point, I'm leaning towards Suzanne for that fact, um, that she's willing to stay a little bit longer. Versus leaving. Uh, we already have a transition plan for the Health Department. I have a great amount of trust and faith in Suzanne. Um. So I would not have any concern about her doing it if she was willing. Uh, one question, I think. She said she was willing to do it for up to six months. Is that correct?
Uh, Commissioner, my uh conversation with her was exactly that, that ideally three or four months, but she would go up to six months. If that were necessary and uh but she wouldn't go any longer than six months.
Okay.
Now, also thinking about kind of the timing that Tracy mentioned, uh if my last day is mid-March. You know, that's really when the the three or four months in her case starts ticking. Uh, so even if she agreed to go six months, you know, that would take you into the middle of September.
Okay, okay. So the timing works out. Okay.
Oh, with that timeline, Joe, uh. Uh, wo- wouldn't there be some uh opportunity for overlap? And. Job shadow um with you uh before March fifteenth? Before you actually leave.
Uh, yeah, excuse me. Yes, Commissioner, there would be. Opportunities for that, and that's why it's really important for me that the board come to a decision as quickly as you can. Uh, what I heard from each board member when I met with you individually last week is all of you felt like you should make a decision. Uh, no later than a week from today, which is the twenty-fourth of January. And so the the sooner that. Uh, I know, the sooner I can get started with that transition and the sooner that that person that you're appointing can also. It's going to take them a couple of weeks to get things lined out in their own department. Uh, and so. Uh, and and then with my involvement in budget and that they should be involved in the budget as well. And so uh there is time. I do have some time off scheduled, uh but that won't uh get in the way of my transition and. Getting done what we need to get done.
So my intention this morning is just to make sure that there's any information that you need to in consideration for making this decision that we're able to get that for you.
Sure. And I guess just to clarify, Commissioner Malone, were you requesting more? Time and making a decision next week, or would you be able to make a decision today?
Uh, another op, I think, uh, opportunity uh this Thursday. The nineteenth um to um. Have a couple of days to um digest the in- information. So, uh, no, I I'm all in favor of sooner the better, but um I don't think I'm quite ready today.
Okay.
Commissioners, is there additional direction that you can provide to Tracy as to whether or not there's uh anything that needs to happen between? Uh, now and uh Thursday, if if you would like us to add this on to. Uh, the agenda on Thursday, we would be adding actually two items. This would be one. Uh, and then the second one would be the recruitment process and strategy.
I um I don't need any further information. Uh, I feel comfortable with uh my preferences and um. Don't see a need for additional information at this time.
And I'm just double checking to make sure um. So.
I had a possible date. It's not a conflict.
Okay, just wanted to see if we all can add time to the end of that meeting. Which is casually get over by noon, so I assume we add like the noon to one o'clock hour, and if we're done before noon, that would. Then we can leave early. Uh, but if we're not, then we have that full hour. So that's fine with me.
Agreed.
And and uh. I think it would be helpful Thursday to have some uh discussion of uh. Possible recruiting firms that um. We would be looking at for. Um.
But.
The.
Not.
Long-term search.
Not sure I'd be able to put that together before Thursday just to manage expectations there, but can certainly talk about. Like what criteria would be important for you? Or what uh in conducting a search, and that would help us identify a good firm to partner partner with.
Yeah, but but do that that would be fine, advance the. Um, discussion and and try try to uh get get. Uh, more of a plan uh go to go forward.
And uh typically with search firms, the uh price tag is low enough that we don't have to go through any kind of a formal RFP and RFQ process, or it's just an identify three option?
Uh, I think we've had some flexibility in the past. Uh, it is a ditch service, specialized expertise required to perform this work.
That's true.
Um. Uh, with that said, it's in the past, what we have done is send out the a kind of a limited RFP. Not sure if that's the right terminology.
Yeah.
Again, um, I'm uh just something, I guess, that might be noteworthy for you is uh over the last. Uh, three years, we've seen many boutique search firms or search individuals um. Uh, come forward in this arena. And uh in my past experience, you really hired a search firm for the staple it kept. For the uh quality of the candidates and prospects that they were in contact with and had actively worked with in the past, and it's just not so much the case anymore.
At this point, then it's much more about the a a firm willing to do the legwork and be proactive and to scour for a potential fit. And recruit actively.
Well, they're not subject to the same rules that we are, and so they have a bit more flexibility when it comes to vetting candidates. Uh, when it uh to conducting outreach, things like that. Um, so they can do some of that work with a little more freedom, um, kind of on the front end. And of course, there is some of the process stuff, but we're walking with them every step of the way.
Yep.
Commissioner Malone, is there additional information that you're needing from staff between now and Thursday?
Uh, don't think so, just what uh Tracy said about um. Uh, what our prospects are for finding a search firm and. Maybe some uh de- developed guidelines. What we're looking for.
Commissioners, do you, I'm sorry, do you have any uh desire at all of the candidates that I heard from you? Last week, uh, there was a total of five of them ultimately, uh, that are all internal candidates. Uh, is there any? Uh, need for the board to do any type of interviews with them or any? Further discussions with them individually? What would you like Tracy to share with them?
I don't feel a need for that. Having worked with these people uh over the last um. Several years in some cases and um at least a year in most.
I agree.
Um, at this time, I do, yeah, I don't, I will agree that there are two commissioners. I do not need that at this time. Um, the only thing I would say is if. For some reason Suzanne changes her mind, it would be nice to know that before the next meeting.
Okay.
That would be good to know.
Tracy can reach out to her and have further conversations. Commissioners, I would like to add that you're in a really great position where you have many choices internally. And uh, so I I just want to highlight that we have outstanding department directors and. I am just really proud of all of them and that we have such high caliber uh professionals from you for from which you can choose.
Yep, and some, a lot of that thanks goes to you as well for making sure that we have good employees and. Mentoring them and being there for them in their professional development. Thank you. Um, I just, I also wanted to say, I. I don't know if there's any employees out there that are nervous or, you know, having a hard time. I personally, I know it's going to be okay. Um, but I don't. You know, I would say feel free to call me, but that might not be appropriate to reach out to every different level of. Staff, but talk to your manager if you have concerns, or I don't know, I just hope that we have a a means for anybody out there who's feeling concerned to talk to somebody about it.
Yeah, I would take this opportunity to say that there are two Joe with Joes coming up. Uh, so there's another opportunity there for people to speak directly to. Administrator Kirby and to express their their feelings if they have that desire. We do have programs designed for those meetings, but uh. Um, that has typically been the opportunity for employees to reach out directly.
Yeah, I I agree with Commissioner Wise's uh comments. I think we're in uh. Uh, good shape. Um. This obviously wasn't Benton County's choice, but uh we're. Uh, we've got uh really great people and a lot of our departments and have uh ha- have good choices. Um, I guess one question I would have with Suzanne Hoffman is uh she's got a fairly hard. Um, deadline of uh six months, if I understand things correctly, and. Uh, my concern is uh we're not in control of. We can work as hard as we can, but we're not in control of the. Uh, timeline and making sure, um, say we uh find a. Uh, a great candidate in um month number four, but they can't start until. Um, ninety days or, you know, there are uh pieces of this puzzle that we. Uh, we're not in control of, even though. We make our best efforts to uh do as uh speedy a process as possible.
I think that will always be the case, just like with the funding for uh justice system there, probabilities, and we have to take calculated risks. Um, I'm hopeful that we can bring someone on board by September. Um. I think this is good timing, frankly, in terms of recruitment. Um, so. Probably the best timing it could be uh just in terms of the time of year that we're we'd be going out. So I've got both. Fingers crossed.
I'm cautiously optimistic. Um, now, these are different levels of position, but we are starting to see the number of qualified applicants increase uh in in other positions, so.
I think this is an attractive role, and Benton County is an attractive place to uh live and work without a doubt. And. You know, I I think it probably goes without saying that we do have some internal candidates that I think could be highly competitive as well.
Okay. So we'll. See you two back there on Thursday. Is that is that the plan?
That's correct. Commissioner, we'll add this on to the agenda for Thursday. All right, anything else on this topic?
We're none, we'll move on to. Uh, Commissioner updates, and I'm not quite sure when. Well, let's do that. Um. Uh, George Looney's retirement party is going on as we speak in uh lunchroom. So hopefully, no pressure, but um. We'll do some Commissioner updates that we gave short shrift to uh at our. Six and three-quarter hour meeting uh last Tuesday. So. Any updates?
Sure. Um, I wanted to share with you, Commissioner, former Commissioner Ann Schuster brought by some um. New newsletter that is being put together uh for South County and um share copies of them with. You all.
Thank you.
Advance, I don't know if you want one.
Sure.
Um.
Thank you.
And um. And, um, there's also an informational handout about the new South Benton, um, community center, social services center, Cappy Naknet. You may have heard that, uh, mentioned by, um, Julie Arena as well. Um, and um, so they put out a handout, um, about that as well. Uh, and the other thing to point out is that the newsletter is, uh, being produced in Spanish as well as English. Um, and this is all, uh, an effort by the, um, South Benton Advisory Committee that is associated with United Way. So I'm assuming that they have funds from United Way to help produce the newsletter. You can see their logo on the back. Um, but it's great. It's another, um, op- tool and opportunity to be able to communicate with our South Benton, um, uh, community members. Um, I think this will go out digitally as well as hard copies, my understanding. I'm not completely certain on their distribution model. Uh, but, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention is that, uh, when Commissioner Schuster contacted me, she, uh, let me know that they would be interested in a short article for their next issue that would come out in March or so, end of March, um, about the Justice System Improvement Program and the, the bond measure. So, um, I will work with, um, Brenda and team and maybe, actually, that's gonna be safe harbor time already, so maybe with a pack hat on, um, to make sure that there's an article in the newsletter about the bond measure. Don't think, oh, I know I have one other i- item, and that is the, uh, issue of the Governor's proclamation, uh, of, of, of an emergency regarding homelessness and the fact that, um, Benton County was not included in the geography of, for the emergency declaration. Um, and I did reach out to several people, to Community Services Consortium, to Peggy McGuire, to our colleagues in, uh, Lincoln County, to, uh, both Speaker Rayfield and Senator Gelsor Blue and um, and they're all concerned about that. Uh, the Lincoln County Commissioners did write a letter to Governor Kotek um, about this and about the fact that because we're included in the remainder of state, um, the, the rural Oregon continuum of care, uh, there was no data specific to Benton County, so it didn't really highlight the needs of Benton County with, with regard to homelessness. Um, and I'd love, love us to put together a letter to the same effect and letting the governor know that, uh, that's not the right way to deal with, um, twenty-six counties of Benton Ca- of, uh, the Oregon that to just include them in that big lump of the, uh, rural Oregon continuum of care. So, um,
Uh, this is from, uh, Representative, uh, Gonberg.
From Gonberg's newsletter.
Newsletter that came out yesterday. I, I've never seen this map and it
Yeah.
Uh, makes absolutely no sense.
Yeah.
To, to have Jefferson County, Cook County, uh, uh, small populations in, um, central or eastern Oregon uh, connected to the Llama Valley group and that, uh, Lynn Benton, Lincoln uh, are excluded and put in with, uh, I think your math is wrong. Twenty, uh, total of twenty-five counties that are in the other group. Um, I, I've seen some, uh, interesting uh, arrange, arrangements of counties. I've never, I, I, I would love to talk to somebody about justifying um, this, this map.
Yeah, this is a federal map. Uh, it's a HUD-based, uh, and, you know, uh, continuums of care or a, a federal entity. Um, and we, this is something that we've been discussing at Community Services Consortium, becoming an independent continuum of care for Lynn Benton, Lincoln, so it aligns with the Council of Governments and the Community Services Consortium and, um, Samaritan and IHNCCO Geography. Um, I, I think that this gives us just that much more impetus to do it. I've also been speaking to Rep Gonberg about this. I know that the Coastal Caucus sent a strong letter to the governor as well, um, asking for um, consideration out, uh, uh, for state of emergency. Those coastal counties are in such dire straits when it comes to housing. So, um, but what I, what I'm most interested in is just making sure that we can also voice our concern to the governor. Um, I'd love to put together a letter that's similar to the one that, uh, Lincoln County put together. Um, so, um, it, it if I can pull something together working with staff, perhaps we can consider it in our next meeting, or I, I'd love to be able to do it sooner. I'm not sure how fast this is moving. I don't know. I, I support that.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, this, uh, well, like I say, this just doesn't make much sense and, and it needs to be rectified and, and I, I like the uh, Lynn Benton, Lincoln, um, grouping because we have a lot of uh, CSE and, uh, COG and, uh, uh, health, um, efforts that, uh, our three counties are used to, uh, working together. So, uh, I would support uh, any strong one pager to the, um, our shiny new governor to, um, um, and, uh, see what we can do to, um, fix this map and, and, uh, um, get, um, get the support we need to, um, and you need to work on our homeless issues.
Fixing the map is a separate process, but we certainly can, um, ask for a different approach to, um, allocating the dollars under the emergency, uh, resolution that the governor has put forward. Uh, but I would ask, um, for opportunity to use some staff support, put together a letter that's tailored to Benton County so that we can be very, uh, provide specific examples.
I can talk with you after the meeting, Commissioner, and we can decide how to pull that together.
Okay, okay. I, I guess just a couple, I'll add a couple of things. Number one, um, you know, of course, we'd like to thank Governor Kotek for taking a first stab at this, and it's very important, but, you know, that she's new and this is her chance to just hear some feedback from us, so we're happy to provide that. Um, this is maybe a separate conversation, but as you mentioned, um, the conversation surrounding uh, Benton County, Lynn Benton, Lincoln, Leaving the Rock and forming our own continuum of care, uh, last so as far as I'm aware, we, the only thing preventing that is we need another commissioner in Lynn County to agree to that. Now, they have sent this letter. I'm just wondering.
This is Lincoln.
Oh, Lincoln, my apologies. Okay, so we're probably still.
I need to reach out to my Lynn County, uh, counterpart and, uh, get a little bit more information and find out where they are. I've not done that yet. Okay.
Well, uh, thank you for raising this. This was on, on my, uh, list also and, um, the letter from Lincoln County came first and I, I wasn't, uh, as aware as I needed to be of the background and, and, um, represent, I find representative uh, Gonberg's newsletter is very
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and, uh, he, he puts a lot of in- information in them and, uh, couple pages up from the map is a picture of two former governors, Speaker Rayfield and uh, Adam and Representative Gonberg. Um, so, uh, Governor Koonjowski and Roberts, uh, it, it's a it's a nice photo and, and shows how, uh, my representative Gonberg is, uh, active and uh, uh, well-connected and, and working hard, so. Uh, anything else?
So, uh, the typical process we've gone through is that we've approved a letter, um, as a board, so we'll do that after a draft is put together.
Great. And, and I agree, sooner the better. Things are, uh, not all, um, firmed up and, and may see what we can do to make our voices heard. Commissioners, I think we can reasonably target next Tuesday, which would be the twenty-fourth, then we're the board to approve. Great.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just would, uh, like to acknowledge the fact that, uh, I, all three of us were at the commemoration for the Martin Luther King, um, uh, birthday uh, celebration, uh, acknowledging, uh, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King's, um, work on behalf of um, social justice and re- and representing the entire movement of social justice and, and racial equality. Um, and that it was really a lovely event. Uh, and the weather was fantastic. Uh, the sun shone on us as we marched over to, um, the Student Experience Center and it so felt very, uh, optimistic and uplifting. And, uh, so, yeah, it was, uh, a great, um, celebration.
Yep, I, I agree. That was, it was good to see people in person again and um, it was also good to see the District Attorney John Haroldson there and, uh, Benton County Sheriff Jeff Van Arsdale.
Mm-hmm.
Five electives, we call them.
Represent.
Yeah, uh, three of them were acknowledged from the podium.
Yes.
And, and Scott, um, realized
Yeah.
There was a couple, at least a couple omissions. Um, and it reminded me of Sarah Gelsor Blue and then so, and I, I hate recognizing people because you always leave somebody out. So, uh, but, uh, great event, good attendance. Um, I, I think that was the end, the baritone, um, singer from I used to be from Portland, but
Oh, yeah.
He's in Corales now, and, and that's got a great voice and, and kind of, uh, inspiring, nice waiting in, in the, in the breakfast, so. And, and we did have, uh, good, good attendance from our electives. And not electives. Well, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, uh, like you say, hopefully, Bert Luen's retirement party is still going. I think that's Ryan Heather's. This. Thank you.